I want to order this December 18th work session of the Grant County Commission Police Joint and the pleasure.
My pleasure. I salute the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Um, consideration of the agenda, is there any discussion on the agenda, today's agenda?
Motion approved. Second?
Uh, it's going to move in the second, any discussion? Okay.
All right.
Motion carries. Uh, the general purpose of the county work session is to inform the county board of commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, which will be Thursday morning at nine o'clock. And for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments in accordance with Grant County Resolution eighteen dash zero one. We welcome the public to attend the county work session, however, there is no public input at this meeting. We have a presentation and I want to welcome Healy Regional Medical Center Kathy Arias and Richard Stokes. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
And Board of Trustees, Chairman Mike Morones.
I have a guest.
You'll have to introduce yourself.
I brought a band of brothers today.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to, you know, I'm always talking about these people and I wanted you to be able to put a name with a face. So I'd like to present, just for a brief introduction, Dr. Gregory Awasa.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. As Taff said, my name is Gregory Awasa. I moved here from New Mexico, brought my five kids along with me and we escaped the winter. Really grateful to be here, although I guess this morning we had a little snow. But we're excited to be part of the community, to get involved and to just experience everything that Silver City has to offer. So far, my kids are going to school and just loving it here. They're loving being able to play outside and enjoy the weather. I've been feeling a lot of support from the community in my practice and I'm grateful for that. Um, I'm the new foot ankle guidance town. I see everything from toenails to, you know, common bunion, hammer toes, to biomechanical issues and sports medicine as well as my own care. So if you guys have any of those issues, I'd be happy to help you out. Hopefully not, hopefully you guys are all up and moving around without any foot problems. But, um, you know, if you are having problems, keep us in mind, we're here to help.
Shall we do a foot check while he's here?
No.
Okay.
I didn't bring any gloves.
Doctor, you said you came from New Mexico, then you meant North Dakota.
No, no, sorry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's the pressure of standing before you guys.
Yeah, we're scary people.
Well, welcome to Grant County.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for being here.
We did have a ribbon cutting for his practice this week and thank you so much for attending. So I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So would you like to?
Sure. Commissioner Steph, public, Mike Morones, trustee, chair of the trustees for the Healy Regional Medical Center. First off, I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas. Probably won't see everybody next week or so, so hopefully everybody has a great holiday season. Also want to point out, we won't have our regular board meeting, our full board meeting this month. We have a special meeting tomorrow to deal with the contracts that must be approved and signed before the end of the month. So just to let everybody aware of that. And that is a public meeting tomorrow at eight at the, at Healy Regional. Also, I just informed that we did get our audit approved from the state, so that's a, that's a big issue. And from a trustee standpoint, probably one of the biggest items that we need to monitor and review and understand being coming from an independent audit, independent audit firm. This is where we get a little bit of a parameter of how our management's doing, how our finances are doing, et cetera. We, we had a little bit of a, last month, you were noted that there was somewhat, a nice adjustment. By the time, it put us in the positive, so last year we finished with a, with a positive income. Um, I think that's probably welcome in light of what's been happening over the last few years, actually. So, so positive income's good. Probably the more important thing is, is it was a, an unmodified report, which is the highest level report, meaning that the financials are clearly stated in all material respects. That's what we're, we're always looking for as, from a board trustees, that they're correct, that we can count on them and move forward, make decisions from those, from those numbers. There's always concerns that, that are always raised. Probably the biggest concern is that there was a repeat finding from the previous year, which basically tells the trustees that we still have a tremendous amount of work going forward. We, we need to continue to focus and, and ask our, our staff to improve and try to, try to get to a point where we have no findings. Not, not only do we want an unmodified report, but we also want a clean, a clean report where there are no findings. So did want to disclose that to you. The, the report is public, so everybody's welcome to look at that. With that, I will turn it over to our CEO.
Well, thank you. Yes. Quick question. Was the finding, was that a material weakness or was that not such a serious finding?
Oh, no, it was, it was a, it was a serious finding. In fact, that was what, it was, you know, two years ago, when this finding was first materialized, it was a, a very, a very, a very serious finding. Right now, it's still, the severity is still there. The, the concern is, is that we're not moving fast enough. So we, we need to, of course, when we had that first finding, we were already into the new fiscal year and we started putting in improvements, but clearly we're, we're not moving fast enough. And, and, and from the trustee standpoint, we need to work faster and just ensure that over this next six months, when, when we're going to be moving into the next audit, hopefully we complete that finding.
Mr. Chairman, and I probably shouldn't be the one to direct you on this, but really until it's released, you shouldn't talk about your audit.
Uh, it's public.
Is it released?
It's released.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's released. And I, and I appreciate that, that comment. And that's why we, I was just having a little sidebar with making sure that that was the case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I just want to express my appreciation for your letting us report today instead of Thursday. I'm, I'm going to take a little bitty vacation and will be gone Thursday, so I do appreciate your allowing us this time. Two things that I would like to talk to you about primarily are, I introduced this topic the last time I was here and I wanted to give you a brief update on it. And this was regarding the transportation issue from using the ambulance service from our hospital to, to other entities that was not approved by, by CMS. And just the update I wanted to give you was that, as promised, I did get a document to Commissioner Edwards. She was gracious enough to meet with our chief quality officer and risk and also our HMS direct HM, uh, not our HMS, sorry. Dan thought, I got another job. No, with our HIM director to, to talk about what the document meant and highlighted portions of it. And I wanted to express my deep appreciation, Senator, I mean, I've already elevated you, Commissioner, for allowing us that opportunity to explain that in detail and also to offer some plausible ways to rectify this and to address it for our patients. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks for having me. It was a great meeting and I really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. The other thing I wanted to also give you an update on is the immigration issue that we have all started to experience fairly heavily. Um, you know, we still are getting patients time to time in bulks of twelve to fifteen, most of which do not, most of whom do not need to be hospitalized, some do. The one thing I wanted to talk to you about is what rights these patients have. So when a patient comes into the hospital, any patient, they have certain rights. You have certain rights, I have rights. We have the right to refuse treatment. We have the right to refuse transfer. We have the right to refuse visitors. We have the right to refuse many things, just because we are patients. So having said that, that is one level of what I would say blockage as to entrance for people entering these patients' rooms. The other blockage that they have or barriers that they would have is because they are in the control, if you would, of the immigration authorities. And so they have their own set of regulations that they go by. So just because they are in our hospital doesn't mean that just anybody can enter their rooms. And so I, I want everyone to understand that because it's not that the hospital is throwing up these barriers arbitrarily, it's because we have a system that protects all patients that come into our hospital. Privacy is one of the utmost things that we protect of all people. So I have been invited to visit the immigration detention center, I suppose it's in Lortsburg, in the beginning of the next year. These things may change because we've had an issue, a pretty big issue that has happened that has grown, it has really caused national news, as it should. Um, and so I'm not sure what it's going to look like in the beginning of the year, what that's, what is going to happen. I know there's a delegation coming today to, I believe, to Lortsburg. I know that there's also one meeting in Guadis. Uh, that's a pretty substantial attendance. And so we'll see what happens from there. But HMS Dan, representing them, has reached out and said, how can we jointly look at this because it is a joint problem for us or a concern? And we need to join forces to look at how we can address this together. So I look forward to meeting with him at the beginning of the year to discuss how we can go forward together, since they already have a place up in Lortsburg and we might can do something jointly with them. So do you have any questions about that?
Actually, I have a question going back to the transportation that you, it sounded like you had come up with some possible options. Is that true or were you just saying that you were looking at them?
No, looking at them. And one of the options that we were looking at, and we had to get some legal and also from our insurance carrier, what our liability would be if we had a courtesy van to take people home. We're looking into that, but I cannot tell you if we're going to be able to go forward with it.
So have you considered the possibility, so this can't be an issue that's unique to the hospital, have you considered the possibility or had any conversations with other providers about sharing that service? Is that possible legally?
I have not. I have not, but our risk department has reached out to other hospitals to see how they're dealing with it.
Okay.
Because you're right, it does not affect just us, it's every hospital.
Well, I would think that it might be other providers in the community as well, then what effect?
Correct. And we have reached out to those who bring patients to us and who have residents that frequent our hospital.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Um, how would you characterize the impact on a normal clientele of the arrival of twelve to fifteen folks that customs and border patrol bring, uh, to the patient?
So far, it has not been a negative impact, but when we get into our heavy flow season, it may be, we may save some wait times. And just because we only have a limited space, we do have a fast track area where we are able to triage these patients as to if their injuries or their conditions are life threatening or is there more clinic time so that we can expedite that type of patient and then online hospitalized those who really need the acute care setting.
Are you getting advanced communications, you know, so we can plan for the arrival of groups?
We have not. We have not, but that's one of the things we're working with and on.
Seems like that. Should be pretty easy to do.
Yes.
Hey, we're coming up.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No, certainly. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman. So what's happening is, these are people that the border patrol is booking up south of here, that they're bringing to you for healthcare because they've, they have some kind of injury or healthcare when they pick them up. And they're bringing them here because it's the nearest hospital.
Right.
Is that what's happening?
Right. But they're in the detention center and they detect that they have some type of illness and then they bring them in. They don't bring them in from picking them up.
Because they're going to the detention center in Lortsburg and then where?
Correct.
Is it in Lortsburg?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we getting a hundred percent of them or is Damon getting part of them too?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that, Mr. Allen.
You might have your own.
Is there a detention center in Damon, Lortsburg?
There is.
I think so too, but I don't have a reference.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, we, we're still working on jointly with the TACASA. We were involved, you were involved in a presentation at the December meeting, which I think was beneficial for everyone involved. There were several people from the hospital that were allowed to discuss, you know, what it is to be in our shoes in different departments when we get patients who need service probably at TACASA or there's a question about whether they should be returned to the detention center here at the jail. And I think it was a very collaborative meeting on the phone there. Did you think it went very well? I thought it was very, very informative. And I think we're going to have some great progress in the future with this, with TACASA. Thank you.
I did have one further question. Have you already, I understand we're losing our new surgeon, which is unfortunate. Our new surgeon?
Yes.
Is there a name? Have you already begun recruiting?
Absolutely. In fact, we have one coming in, it's the first week of January for an interview.
All right, glad to hear it. Have we already discussed in this meeting the full-time oncologist?
I think I reported that last time. I'm not sure that we.
I'll answer it for you.
We do have a full-time oncologist coming in. He should be in sometime in first, first of the year, first quarter of the year, January. And of course, he's employed through HMM and so we're doing his credentialing right now. So as soon as he gets his license and getting a credential, he'll be here on site. He will be living here in Silver City with his family and so he'll be part of this community.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So this is the financial report for the month of October, which is our fourth month of our fiscal year. Uh, just to read the highlights on the report, for that, for the month of October, we had a $595,000 profit, which brought our year-to-date loss down to 281,944 versus the $4.4 million loss last year. EBITDA for the year-to-date wise, so we've had about a little over thirty, $1.3 million in positive cash flow versus a negative cash flow of, or negative EBITDA, a little over three million this time last year. So you can imagine since we, you know, we had a profitable month, you know, it follows that volume were up at the hospital and if you look on page two, you can kind of see how those volumes fluctuated primarily, the big increase being in our patient activity. Our cash collection for the month was $5.1 million. Our days on cash is a 68.8 days. Our days in AR, our net days in AR is 56. Our days on accounts payable ended at 46 days. I think we've done a nice job in reducing our days on accounts payable. So again, our case mix index was 1.47 versus 1.48 last year, so I was about to say for the quantity of services required. You can see from the oncology graph that we're continuing our upward trend as the oncologist comes on board full-time, we're expecting to see that, that increase to steepen a little bit. Looking ahead to November, which, you know, we've already obviously completed November, but to kind of give you a head to our gross revenue, although at this particular time we noted about $5.5 million, we did, we were challenged at the end of November with some decreasing volume, so it's going to have a downward pressure on our November numbers that we reported at our next meeting. Cash collections so far, we, we're expecting to collect $5.2 million and that's pretty much where we came in at, to be honest with you. And then the last page of my report is the, is the gross revenue by month. So if you, you'll see by that for October, you know, we had a really strong month for October this year versus October last year, we're about $2 million greater in charges than we were this time last year. So I will make one comment on the, on the audit and the, and what Mr. Morones discussed. So after we finished the audit, I sat down with the audit partner, Tom Vingas, and we had, we had a conversation about how things went this year versus the previous two years. So, you know, I'm glad to report that, that Tom reported that the access to information was much, much easier this year than in prior years. The response, in some ways was faster and in some other ways was a little bit slower, so we're working on that. We do have, during the finance committee meeting in prior to that, we had a discussion on whether we wanted to make sure we were on track for making the necessary improvements within the finance area. So we have asked Tom to perform some agreed-upon procedures in January for the six months ended December. So we're on track to do that in January, so we can make any mid-year corrections through our processes. But we have made significant improvements. We're about to find out how far down the road we are. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioners, I would like to follow you, a very, very happy holiday season and thank you so much for helping us. We really do appreciate it very much. I think 2019 is going to be a spectacular year and I really look forward to sharing all of our progress with you next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Actually, I do have a question. It's for all of us. I thought that doing this on Tuesday at our work session actually works very well. We're not holding up other people who want to present to us. And I wonder, A, is it inconvenient for you to do on Tuesday to the Thursday and B, what's the assignment of the rest of the commission?
Yeah, if that's convenient for you, I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
I'm not sure that we have a problem with that. We're going to share with you.
That will be fine for us.
Does that work for you? Awesome.
We're not innocent, we're not flexible. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a presentation from HMS, Mr. Otero, Dr. Nelson.
Good morning.
Morning.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning and.
No, I guess you're not, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Brad is on.
There you go.
Good morning, Commissioner and County Director of the National Web and all in attendance. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning to the commission regarding Hidalgo Medical Services and all the activities that we have going on. And I do want to start off by saying I'm sorry that I didn't make last month's meeting, it was a little bit of a mix-up on my part regarding which day I was supposed to be here, so I do apologize for that. I did ask Dr. Nelson, our chief medical officer, to join me today for a couple of reasons. One of them is, and one I'm most proud of stating is, it is true that Hidalgo Medical Services, granted Hidalgo County, have the best chief medical officer in the country. And I was reminded of that by a national colleague just as early as yesterday, so I would be remiss if I didn't ask him to say a couple of words related to quality and service here in a few minutes. And also, for those of you that were able to attend the TACASA ribbon cutting, it is very much appreciated. We had a great turnout of over a hundred people. There's, there's been a lot of work that's gone into that and so it's a really important day for HMS and for the community, for addiction services. So thank you once again. I provided you with a handout that I want to ask you to follow along with, because I just want to make a couple of key points with each of these. And again, this won't take too long, but there's some key things that I wanted to make sure and stress as I go through this brief presentation, or as we go through the brief presentation. What, page two of the presentation is a map. And that map shows healthcare access, primary healthcare access before HMS was established in 1995. And everybody knows HMS was established in Hidalgo County. But that, that yellow web pattern on that map demonstrates truly where healthcare access was over the two county area at the time. And with the community coming together to provide better access to healthcare services, which is crucial, obviously, for, for quality of life, the map on the right demonstrates where we are now. We have over 25 locations over the two counties with 16 of those locations providing clinical services. And the map demonstrates, the yellow now demonstrates access within 30 minutes to healthcare providers. So I wanted to start with that. And also I want to take the opportunity to talk about who we are as an organization. HMS is a private 501(c)(3) federally qualified health center that is licensed and overseeing the regulatory oversight that occurs through HERSA, the Health Resources Service Administration. And we're an organization that's proudly serving Hidalgo and Grex County. And so as I go through the slides, as I move through the next slide, I want to talk about what that impact looks like. So our service area, obviously, over the two counties, is greater than 35,000 people who access at any given time HMS's services. And these services equate to about over 16,000 unique patients visiting our health centers, our services, approximately 82,000 visits a year. So these are crucial services that are provided to the two, two-county area that without HMS being supported and in the community would have a detrimental impact not only to the health and wellbeing of those we serve, but also to the economics of our, of our counties. We're also a proud provider of healthcare services to our veteran population and we're quite proud of that. And we also work very hard to look for veterans to, to come to work for HMS because we know that they serve this country in ways that none of us, many of us can't imagine. So we want to always take care of our veterans and I like to stress that. Moving to the next slide, this is an important part of who we are as an organization. We maintain accreditation through the Triple HC, which is the Accreditation Association for Amortory Healthcare. We are now a patient-centered medical home in all of our clinical sites, whereas three years ago, we were primarily, that accreditation was only held in two of our clinics. What does that mean? That means that we're providing quality healthcare in following standards of national standards for, for quality care delivery. And I've also put on this slide, slide number five, many of the, a short list of many of the associations and accreditations that we carry to ensure that our patients and clients receive the best quality of service possible. Not only are we heavily regulated by HERSA to ensure patient safety and quality delivery, but we also have accreditation through the Council for Graduate Medical Education for our residency program, which I'm going to ask Dr. receive the best quality of service possible. Not only are we heavily regulated by HERSA to ensure patient safety and quality delivery, but we also have accreditation through the Council for Graduate Medical Education for our residency program, which I'm going to ask Dr. Nelson to talk a little bit about. So we're really clear as a, as a commission, as well as a community, what does that really mean to have a residency program right here in the region of Hidalgo County? We're also a recipient of the New Mexico Quality Performance Excellence Award, which is an important part of ongoing continuous improvement for us. We carry affiliations and associations with the National Council for Behavioral Health, which known as a critical aspect in our country, in our state, in our community, and we also have a great partnership with Fortune's Top One Hundred places to work, so that we can ensure and we create a culture to recruit the best talent possible into our communities, which we'll talk about in just a second. Moving to slide number six, current services. Community health centers usually provide medical, dental, and behavioral health, and they're not only required to provide all three of those. At HMS, we provide medical, dental, mental health, family support, senior services, and a residency program. And, and the title of that slide was what do we do currently, because it's changing fast, as you know, and one of our responsibilities to HERSA, the federal government, is to respond to the needs of the community, meaning if there's a community need such as social detox or addiction services, we have a responsibility of the federal grantee to develop strategies, processes, and resources to meet those needs as best we can. And of course, we are quite proud of the partnership we have with both counties, but specifically more recently with that county as it relates to the senior services. I, I think we've all been hearing the great news of the great work that's been able to happen in those senior services, and we, we believe that's only scratching the surface of what we have planned for our seniors in the two county area. So with, with that, before I continue on, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Nelson to add a couple of comments on anything I've covered so far, as well as cover slide number seven regarding how well did we do.
Thank you, Dan. Good morning. My name is Eric Nelson, and I'm a family physician. I've been here since 2010 as the Chief Medical Officer. I'm going to talk a little bit about our quality and our patient satisfaction survey results. There's on the next slide, something called Uniform Data System, or UDS Report. What that is, it's a federal report that every FQHC in the country has this event on an annual basis. We've got our data system such that we can run that similar report every month and compare ourselves to New Mexico averages and the average scoring of FQHCs across the entire country. When we look at this last, HMS is doing better than New Mexico average on ten out of fifteen clinical quality measures. And those clinical quality measures cover everything from cancer screenings to diabetes care, neurotensive care, and coronary artery disease, mental health measures like depression screening, which by the way, we do far better than the state or the country in our depression screening because of our mental health department. There's a dental measure in those, those fifteen. It's, it's really a nice feather to our cap to say we do better than the state in ten out of fifteen measures. We also do better than the whole country in nine out of those fifteen measures. We're continuing, quality is, is, it's part of my craft, it's, it's part of my soul, my being, what I want to do. Not only do I want to help provide care to the community, to the patients in Grant, in Hidalgo Counties, we want to make sure it's of the highest quality possible. And it's something that we've ingrained in our residency program, in our teaching, that it's not just enough to write a prescription and say goodbye and on your way. We need to make sure our patients are cared for in a comprehensive and an integrated way. That speaks to all the way back to Two Casa. When we get a, a patient who's struggling with addiction, we want to take care of the whole patient, not just the ones that happen to be there for, for addiction. A little bit of that, that sort of philosophy is evidenced by, there's a newer medication out that's used for opioid addiction, heroin or opioid pills. It's similar to methadone, but it's less, less ravaging than, than methadone. It's called buprenorphine and loxone, or the, the trade name is Suboxone. To be able to be a physician and prescribe that, you have to get a special DEA waiver to prescribe that medication. There's only one provider in all of Gret County that's currently doing medication-assisted treatment with Suboxone, and you happen to be looking at them. And I'll tell you, when I started this, I've been completely impressed at the patients that I've been taking care of, how motivated they are to stay out of the illicit drug use. They're coming to their appointments. HMS is doing integrated medical care with me at the same time doing group visits in our mental health department, making incredible strides towards, towards helping people fight this addiction. HMS is working on getting more of its providers waived to do buprenorphine prescriptions. We've got two right now that are in the process of getting up to speed in, in our processes. Not only do we want to take care of these patients who are addicted to the opioid in this crisis, we want to take care of the whole patient. Again, Evans, by when I took on this, this process of doing this, I made sure that we looked at the whole patient, made sure that they had important cancer screenings done. Even though it's unrelated to their, their addiction, we want to make sure we're taking care of the whole patient. If we have a patient that's oral health is, is ravaged by drug abuse, we can help them. We've got a great dental department that can really, again, take care of the whole patient. So our quality is applied to everybody, regardless of their uninsured, self pays, flight fee, Medicaid, Medicare, liver rust pollution, we're going to treat you exactly the same and take care of the same high quality of our patients. I, I think some of that's reflected in our, our satisfaction survey scores. Overall satisfaction is top box ninety-eight point eight-three percent. This isn't over just a hundred surveys. This is several thousand surveys that we've been doing for almost two years now, maintaining well above this ninetieth percentile in the top box rate. Our, we're at a referral rate of friends or family of eighty-one point ninety-eight percent. Yes, I'd like to see that higher, and I, I think that will go higher. A little bit about the residency program. We're a family medicine residency program. It takes three years of training to become board certified in family medicine residency. We're the only residency program in New Mexico that is certified as called a teaching health center. We're funded through HERSA, not through regular Medicare processes. We're the only residence, we're the only residency program in the whole state that's not on the I-25 corridor. Why is that? It's because there was a study in two thousand eight by the New Mexico Department of Public Health that showed fifty percent of all the doctors in New Mexico half were in Burnley County. Why is that? It's because of where they trained. There was a Robert Grant Center study a couple of years ago, showed fifty-six percent of family medicine residency graduates staying within a hundred miles of their home. Our residency program has been nationally recognized for placing sixty-six percent of its graduates in rural and underserved locations. Nationally recognized for training residents to stay in rural areas. We've had seven graduates so far. We've retained three of them to stay here and work in Grant, in Hidalgo Counties. So having a small residency program is working, and I'll turn it back over to Dan.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. That was, as you can see why I gave the title at the beginning, right? I'm going to let know that they're in his head. And I know if you have questions for him at the end, he'll be happy to answer those. So I'll move now to slide number eight, which is very much related to what he was just sharing. I want to share with you, when, when I came on board HMS in early twenty sixteen, we had an outm vibration of eight providers, and so we were behind the curve from the standpoint of the number of providers we have available to serve our communities. So Dr. Nelson and I, and some of the other agents got together to come up with a recruitment strategy, and I just want to share with you the, the numbers that are on that slide. We've had a net increase of twenty-six providers, and that's medical, dental, and behavioral health brought into our communities to serve the populations that need these services. The healthcare system is, is only as good as the providers that are there to provide the, the services. Our job as administrators is to get, to get the bureaucracy and the inefficiencies out of the way so they can provide great care. So the pictures are just to represent a small sample of the number of people we've recruited. But I also want to share that for every physician that is brought into our communities, it equates to over a million dollars in economic impact. You know, we don't sometimes slow down and think about that. Because as, and part of my role is truly about, a big part of my role is to look at the economics of, not only the organization, but the partnerships and the communities that we serve. So how do we do it? I'm going to quickly, you know, move to slide number nine. We do what we're doing, and we've created the momentum that we've created because we truly focus on the mission. And the mission is to positively impact the health well-being and quality of life that we serve, by providing comprehensive, innovative, affordable healthcare and education for our patients and for healthcare professionals. So when we have to make decisions every day, whether we, how, how do we partner to get Two Casa started? How do we partner to, to take on the senior centers? We ask a critical question, who are we here for? And will this truly positively impact the health well-being of, of the individual? And if we can't answer that as an affirmative yes, then we'll continue that analysis, but as you know, there's such a need out there, it's pretty much an easy answer. So, so we focus on the mission, and leadership is crucial. It's crucial in our success, and our leaders are constantly striving to be better leaders to support the people that do the work at the bedside every day. And we never, we never lose sight of our values, which are service, culture, education, community, and excellence. And we put service first because we are a service organization. Like I said, we're not-for-profit, and we're here to serve each of you and your family members in the community. And last but not least, not only do we have to recruit, but we have to retain these, these excellent people that serve you every day, and that's by valuing them and what they bring to the table. Which takes me to the next slide on page ten. We have over sixty different professions, professional titles, not individuals, sixty different professions, nurse, physician, nurse practitioner, dentist, dentist, custodian service, maintenance professional, et cetera. They equate to two-hundred-and-forty people every day working hard to serve the community. And at the community health center on page eleven, what does that mean to the communities? How are we giving back? And so this is just a quick snapshot. We provide over fifty-two outreach events. That means we not only support them financially, but we're present at those outreach events to make sure people are accessing services and understand what's available to them. We provide thousands of dollars in sponsorships to support everything from the small sports teams to organizations that just need help to, to run their public event. We are very active in the community from that standpoint. We provide enrollment for people that don't have access to insurance. We, you just walk into the family support office, and we can give you a variety of options that are available to you to make sure you get the healthcare coverage you need, or get you on a sliding fee to, to be able to access healthcare services. In addition, I, I really like to stress this, as you can see, I've got a lot of pride and I have a, a special place in my heart for our seniors, and I just want to point out, look at the, the total of conduit mails, both conduit mails and home-delivered mails, as well as needed transportation for our seniors. Again, carried on the tradition that the county was doing, and, and doing everything we can through that partnership to improve upon that. This is a huge impact to people who are, especially the homebound, this could be their only mail for the day. So this is a big deal for us. And then the, the last item on that slide is tied back to some of the questions that, that you asked Ms. Arius about transportation, et cetera. Social determinants of health are the greatest barriers to high-quality healthcare access and delivery. If somebody can't find transportation to get to the clinic to see their provider, they don't make their appointment, that has a negative impact on us as an organization, but more importantly, it has a negative impact on them getting their med refilled, or getting, or getting a diagnosis that could be a serious diagnosis, that could lead, lead to their demise eventually if they don't get the right access. So it's everything from economic to helping with their physical environment, education, food, et cetera, et cetera. So our family support team is just really incredible to help individuals navigate challenges that they face in the healthcare system or in life in general. And moving to slide number twelve, again, in my role, it's important to understand the economics organizationally and in the community. As a federally qualified health center, we receive about four million dollars a year in federal grant monies, both as a three-thirty grantee, as well as the fund we receive for our teaching health center that Dr. Nelson was referencing. So when we talk about the economic impact that HMS has made historically and will continue to make over the next five years, that's twenty-four point five million dollars in federal funds that are coming right into our communities. You add that with our patient revenue of approximately eighty million, that's a hundred and four point five million dollars of economic impact incorporating to this, to this grant in Hidalgo County. We're creating jobs, and again, I'm quite proud of that. If you look at the number of employees we have, we had two-hundred-and-four in January of twenty sixteen, we're currently at two-forty. This number just changed over the last couple of weeks, and we're projected to hit two-seventy by the middle of, of the start of our new fiscal year of July. Most of that's due to some of the behavioral health stuff that I'm just, I'm getting ready to talk about, but lots of economic growth and job, job growth as well. So on slide thirteen, here is what I believe is the, the key success factor, and that's our partnerships. And I continually stress this, but I believe it really is the, the golden key to healthcare success in Grant, Hidalgo County. It's our partnerships, the partnerships that we have with Grant County, the partnerships we have with Hidalgo County for the services we provide there, our partnership with Hila Regional to provide a residency program, our partnership with the Southwest Center for Health Innovation for student rotations through our system, partner with the Town of Silver City, as we know. The partners that came together to connect Two Casa work was multiple stakeholders coming together, and lives are going to change because of that. State partnerships, national partnerships, and again, this is a short list, but I also have enlisted here in red our community physicians. You know, we just had breakfast this morning, Dr. Nelson and I did, with the Chief of Staff of the hospital this morning, Dr. Corey, and we truly, truly are committed to every single patient and every single community member. Sometimes we have to work through the dynamics of organizations, the organizational dynamics, but we're all committed to the same, the same goal of great healthcare. So my second to final slide is on page fourteen. Do you want to talk a little bit about what's happening at HMS moving into the future? As you know, as I think most of you know, we recently leased Dr. Sparks' building on Hudson Street. That is now going to house Careland New Mexico, also a new SAMSA grant for care coordination for non-Medicaid recipients, as well as integration services are going to be housed under that new facility. Both those programs are bringing thirty of those jobs that I talked about recently, but this is a place where any community member can walk in that building and, and say, I need access to, it could even be hospital service, it could be services in the community at Dr. Roschuk's offices or Dr. Schke's office. It's not about getting people that people at HMS, it's about getting people to navigate, helping them navigate the healthcare system, maybe to reengage in the healthcare system to create better outcomes. So we're quite proud of that, and we'll be opening that by January first, move it, move into that facility and open by January first. Additionally, just to highlight again quickly, my appreciation, our appreciation to everybody that's helped make Two Casa possible, and as a quick update, we've got our letter of intent in with the state to get our Crushes Trio Center license, which the rules were just promulgated just a few weeks ago and released for those social detox services. So they've accepted our letter of intent, and they're sending out the application, and we'll submit that as quickly as possible, and then it's a matter of now recruiting another twenty healthcare professionals to support the twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven services. We know that's really going to be our greatest challenge moving forward, is getting a number of qualified therapists, addiction specialists, nurses, and MAs to staff that up twenty-four seven. Based on our track record on the recruitment side that I shared with you on an earlier slide, we're optimistic, but how long that will take, I'm not sure. HMS is, and the Board of Directors, I can't go ahead acknowledging them, we are investing a lot of our, our capital, our cash, to, to make this work. So that partnership and that ongoing support is just crucial, not only locally, but at the legislative level as we work through that. But we're committed one hundred percent to make this a reality for our community. Also, in the, in the top right-hand corner of that slide, we're, we're working with a state clinically integrated network, which is the next generation of reimbursement models in healthcare, moving from fee-for-service to value-based reimbursement. What does that mean for the community here? It means that the seventeen federally qualified health centers in the state are coming together to work with our payers to negotiate better reimbursement rates for the services we provide, and that'll be based on improving quality outcomes. So what that means for this community is, if HMS again invests its capital resources and human resources to join the clinically integrated network at the state level, it's going to drive better healthcare delivery locally, better quality outcomes. It's also going to improve our reimbursement rates over time, so we're quite proud of that as well. So we're quite proud of that as well. Because there truly, we still maintain that goal of the circulane of the IHI or the Institute for Health Improvement, which is improve the health of our population, reduce the cost of care, and improve the experience of care for those we serve. Also, we are negotiating, moving on, we're negotiating an agreement with an optometrist. One of the access issues for those that we serve is vision care, specifically for the Medicaid population. Not a whole lot of optometrists in our community are able to serve the Medicaid population. So our plan, our strategic plan is to bring in these optometrists and open up vision services, which will also not only help with vision care access to HMS clients and patients, but also help with managing their diabetes as it relates to retinal eye exams and making sure that we address those health issues. Right now, many of those patients have to travel out of town for a couple hours to get those screenings done to find out if they have any serious eye issues. And then the last one I want to highlight here is taking our senior services to the next level. We all know that our seniors is the fastest-growing population in all communities, but specifically in Grant and Hidalgo County. And coverage for seniors, healthcare coverage, is not necessarily comprehensive. And when Dr. Nelson talked about that holistic care delivery model, Medicare doesn't cover some of the services, for example. So we're proud to announce that we've hired Dr. Pedro Almondadis, who's one of our third year residents, who will be finishing his residency in June, and he's coming to work full-time for HMS. He has a passion for senior services and geriatric services, and he's going to be serving as our medical director. Our vision is to bring our resources together as a community and do what we can to add those services that seniors are having trouble accessing. Foot care, we'd love to partner with Dr. Lassi. I hope I said that right, excuse me. We have the new podiatrist that he's a regional, so he can come to our center and help do foot exams, for example, and support that potentially, plus the vision care. So again, a big emphasis in 2019 for enhancing our services to our seniors. And lastly, I have to give credit to Dr. Nelson. I think if you were at the Tu Casa open house for ribbon cutting, there was a key promise that he stressed, and that's a key promise of HMS, that we truly are committed to your health, and that's our commitment. Your total health is our total commitment. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe there may be questions around the border issues or transportation, or maybe others, and I'd be happy to entertain those. Thank you.
Thank you for that comprehensive presentation, both of you. Any questions?
Yes.
Thank you, that was great. It was really nice to hear all the things that HMS is going to help folks in Hidalgo and Grant County. Really appreciate what you and Dr. Nelson and all your staff do. I'd like for you to talk just a little bit about HMS's transportation issues and what you're doing to the press.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd be happy to do that. So what really triggered a deeper analysis of transportation for those clients and patients that we serve was based on the transition that we're going through in the Miami district in regards to moving our location from our Bear Clinic to a new location that's shaping up to happen in San Francisco, at least on the interim. Part of why the Bear, or patient, the clinic that we had in Bear is we know that there were some patients, because of transportation, they go to the Bear Clinic, and we even know that there's some patients that would actually walk because of transportation issues to that clinic. So that triggered me to dig a little bit deeper into what options do we have to continue to get our clients to their appointments. So very similar to what Ms. Arias did, I'm talking to legal counsel about transportation laws, and they have changed recently. And there are now some laws do allow for organizations like HMS to provide transportation either free or at a minimum charge. There are very specific requirements around that to include, it can only be door-to-door, meaning from the patient's home to their actual appointment. They have to be actual clients of HMS, meaning that they have, that they're actual patients of our center. So it's door-to-door, we can bring them to the clinic and then we can take them home. But we can't transport them necessarily to go get their groceries, for example. Now, the secret transportation services that we provide have a little bit different requirements around that. So the short answer is, there are some options. And I have actively begun to reach out to our healthcare providers, say, can we pull our resources to help fund that? And create a model in which, obviously, there's independent people out there that provide transportation services, so there's requirements, for example, we can't advertise. It has to be a matter of somebody's making an appointment, and they say, "But I don't have any way to get there." And then we can say, "You know what? We can provide you from your home to the clinic." I'm not sure the implications will be for other organizations or hospitals, per se, but I know that the OIG and CMS have loosened those rules because they know for a fact that transportation is bringing worse outcomes for people. So CMS has loosened that rule. And they also announced just this week, this kind of sidebar, they're talking about using federal CMS funds to start to pay for housing for people that are having trouble finding housing. For, yeah, so it's evolving. They're a long way from that, but the new director of CMS is proposing that in the future because of the impact of social determinants of health. So we're doing that analysis, Commissioner Edwards, and we're still working with our legal counsel to figure out what we can do. I think HMS' biggest challenge, in my opinion, is we have, you know, the square mileage. I always forget the square mileage between those counties. How do I provide that to a Bear or Silver City resident and not to an anonymous resident? So that's where the challenge is, and I think coming together with the healthcare system would be our best solution for meeting that need.
So if you have, if an HMS patient, say, in Mortzberg, calls 911 and is transported, as a result of that 911 call, is transported to Hill Regional. You know, one of the things that Ms. Arias is talking about is that, you know, they can no longer provide people transportation home. And we know that that's a serious problem for folks in Miami district, for, you know, all the high-mining areas in both counties. If you're transported to the hospital by ambulance, how do you get home? So could your van service, should you decide to go that route, pick up your patient at your ER and take him home?
We're not clear on that answer. That's one of the questions I did ask legal counsel. The language is a little bit ambiguous around that. It calls for two mechanisms, either door-to-door or place a van on a regular rotation, right? Similar to what Coda Commandos does. That's one of the other viable ways to do that, and then you cannot deviate from that. But as far as taking an HMS patient from a discharge scenario in the ER to home, I don't believe we'd be allowed to do that. Now, again, I don't want to enter half the hospital, I think their legal counsel has to advise them whether they could do that because technically they're a client at that point. So it hasn't been certified quite yet.
So what I think I hear you saying is that in order to really address this issue comprehensively, even if you create a partnership, say, between GRMC or Silver Healthcare or whatever, there may be different rules for GRMC than for HMS or Silver Healthcare. And so, for example, one van couldn't do everything. You might have to have a van at the hospital and a van at HMS.
I think my response would be, is I have hope that one van system might be able to do that.
But now, it doesn't sound like...
Well, I'm just not sure, to be honest with you, because there's some stipulations in the rules that give example of a hospital and then they give example of a primary care clinic. And they're slightly different and a little bit difficult to understand, so that's why we have counsel trying to work through that.
Okay. So I would just say in closing that, and I said this to Ms. Arias earlier, gonna say it again, keep saying it, we really, really need to create some partnership around this issue. It's a huge, huge issue for low-income folks all over both counties, and we really need to address it in a systemic, collaborative way, not as individual organizations.
I concur. Thank you for that. Further questions for Mr. O'Toole?
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for the opportunity and...
Good luck.
See you next month.
Thank you. So does that work for you to come with the work session?
Yes, if I can't make it, you're welcome. People have to come give updates.
Okay, great.
Thanks for being with us.
So I've ran out of presentations listed on my agenda. Where do we head next?
Ms. Arias, I have an interview. I'm going to go in and...
Okay.
The folks will talk during their time.
Okay. So Anthony will talk during the regular meeting, right?
That's right. If you are speaking now, you can speak now, so we can get back to this.
Okay. Okay. So this morning, we have Anthony Gutierrez, Director of the CAP entity, here with us, I think to talk about the new proposed JPA.
Do you need to make a motion to add that to the agenda under the presentations?
I really thought it was going to come under the county reports because the CAP entity is, we are a part of that.
Maybe after we hear his presentation, we'll know more about that.
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, as I just wanted to give the brief presentation or explanation of the joint powers agreement currently with the municipal CAP entity. The language in the joint powers agreement, if you'll look on page four, I don't know if you guys have given the red line version of the JPA, but on page four, the language exclusive to adding the potential for other water utilization alternatives to the joint powers agreement. Previously, the joint powers agreement was solely for two purposes. One, for the development of the New Mexico unit, and second, for potential negotiations to utilize infrastructure from Freeport-Mackinnon to bring water for potential recharge project in the New Mexico aquifer. This would add language that is in the AWSA itself, which is specific to other water utilization alternatives. Some other alternatives have already been funded in what we call the first round of funding, when the Interstate Stream Commission funded $9.1 million to both water projects and conservation projects in southwest portion of New Mexico. Since then, of course, we've had a lot of dialogue with our legislators, we've seen the legislation to try and reallocate the New Mexico unit fund for exactly this purpose. So I went to our legislators and spoke with them, and their biggest concern was that we had this money in the state coffers, or whatever you want to call it, and it wasn't being utilized for what we would call a potential need in southwest New Mexico. I also visited, of course, with Priscilla to try and find out exactly, we reviewed ICIPs, we went through the applications, through various other water-related programs such as the Colonia, CDPT, those type of programs, which are also front water-related projects. And we took a look at those and said that this last year, I think it was around $11 million in requests. So I took this back to the board, had some concerns about, had some of the same concerns we've been able to get the New Mexico unit to develop a New Mexico unit and be paid for with what we'd call the construction funds, which is the part of money that was in the legislation that wasn't part of the Mexico unit fund, which we're talking about right now. And so what we're seeing is that we're able to potentially pay for that project without using the Mexico unit fund for construction. So the board is making an agreement now for, I guess, a couple of months, that we could potentially change the language in the joint powers agreement to allow for other potential projects. We took that to the Interstate Stream Commission, they tabled it because of concerns that we need to make sure that we got to the end of the process, which is in the language here on page four, which is, which shows after the issuance of the record of decision. Their concern was that we would get to the end of this process, have a record of decision, and wouldn't be able to go through with the project that we've been working on for 10 years now. So that's the basis of the changes. You'll see in different parts of the JPA, some similar language, language is taken from the AWSA itself, so that we wouldn't change the language in any way. And so we felt that this would meet some of the concerns of not only the legislators, but also, Mr. Rollins is not here, but he has been a big advocate for other projects that would affect this area. And so I think that we're trying to, we're trying to meet that. I would like to mention, though, however, even though we haven't been able to fund other projects with that fund, there has been, it has been invested, and now we have, we've gained about close to $6 million in market value with that money. So there has been an increase. That $6 million is, will actually pay for the engineering and the EPO process that we've done since the Mexico CAP entity has come into existence. So outside of that, that's all I have, and I'd certainly be open to answering any questions.
So you said the ISC tabled this, so is that pending the other parties recognizing it, or?
Mr. Chairman, they just passed it on their last meeting only a week ago.
So they originally tabled it, but they did...
That's correct.
Okay, that was my understanding, okay, that it was passed. And so you're asking us to review and, what would you say, ratify this?
That's correct, because as a member of the CAP entity board, it's a requirement that all of the members of the JPA approve any amendments.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Gutierrez?
I do, I think for the headboard as well. I'm outside of here. Yeah, I have a couple. Without this JPA, what is the process for using, for deciding where the New Mexico unit funds? That's just up to the ISC right now?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, right now, actually, without the amendment to the JPA, the JPA kind of prohibits the Interstate Stream Commission, sorry, from reallocating the funds. But they would have to exclude themselves from the JPA in order to do that, because the joint powers agreement is solely for the purposes that I explained earlier.
So when the original $9.1 million was allocated, wasn't that decision made by the ISC?
It was, it was prior to the issuance of this joint powers agreement.
So that explains that part. So as you understand, if we don't approve this amendment, the New Mexico unit fund cannot be used for other non-divergent projects by anybody. You're saying the ISC can't do it unless it divorces itself from the JPA and the CAP entity can't do it because it's not in there?
In my understanding of how the joint powers agreement works, yes, that's correct.
So my next question, I guess, is about the future of the ISC, which I believe will relatively soon have new membership. Because I'm concerned also about waiting for a rod before using these funds. And I greatly appreciate Commissioner Rollins' efforts to free up this money for projects that we need here and that are having to move ahead without this fund, I think, right now, which is going to be a burden on the users of that water here in Grand County. which is going to be important on the users of that water here in Grand County. So, I'm wondering, I guess, if the future ISC might be able to be using New Mexico unit funds prior to the issuance of a rod. And let me explain, it's not just necessarily waiting till the end of 2019, right? There's a possibility, and I think people are already working on making this happen, that we will request, we need New Mexico, we'll request an extension of that deadline. So, potentially, the rod is farther out than just another year. And I'm interested in seeing, the amendment like this happen, but without that requirement to wait for the issuance of a Record of Decision. Do you think the next ISC might give you an update on that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I would assume that they may. I know that the priority is development of the AWSA water at this point. I can't say that, I can't say what would happen or what wouldn't happen by decisions by the ISC. I don't know. My attorney may have some more knowledge about exactly what may have to happen in order for that to, I mean, to happen. So, I'm kind of in agreement, but I also would like to mention that, under the current NECA process, an EIS has to be completed within a year's timeline also. So, even though we have that 2019, December 2019 deadline, the NECA process also is under timeline restrictions right now. So, irregardless of whether or not there's an express request for an extension, the EIS and potentially the Record of Decision would come, I mean, at the same time anyway. But that has to do with the new executive order and the Secretary of the Order from the Secretary of Interior's office.
Which we understand, but you're right, for now, that's the assumption. Okay, well, I suppose, it's my speculation that a future ISC would be open to that. It sounds like you, well, no, but it's hypothetical. I think that's also possible, given the implications of this administration.
And that's, it's completely possible, right, Chairman?
Thank you.
Further questions, Mr. Gutierrez?
I guess the real question here is whether I want to add this to our Thursday agenda?
Is that right? I think so, yeah.
And I've been doing hard to do something since. My request is going to be to wait and see what happens with the ISC anyway. That's my position.
So, you're expecting immediate changes to the ISC?
I would say prior to December 51, 2019, for sure, and my guess would be January 4th.
So, if I understand this correctly, then if we were to pass this now, then it would prohibit any new ISC from exercising their authority to take money from the New Mexico unit to fund other local projects, correct?
Seems to me it would do that. Yeah, I might want to ask a lawyer, but if it's arrogating that authority to this body, that means it's taking away that authority from the ISC. Charlie's making the face, so maybe we want another opinion.
I'm just looking at, I know she hasn't, she got this yesterday, five minutes, five--
At the same time, maybe already? So, you're suggesting that maybe both bodies could do it? Yeah, that's the alternative explanation would be that either the CAP could do it or the ISC could do it, but seems unworkable if that's the interpretation.
So, doesn't the ISC have to approve this also?
Yeah, they already have. We just--
They already have, okay.
How many of the other entities have approved this that are part of the JPA?
I know that several have taken it, they have taken it to their boards, the same as, kind of would have to take to their boards. So, they would all, I don't know how many of them have their meetings, I don't know how many of the other entities have approved at this time.
So, why did we just get this yesterday at five o'clock?
Well, I don't know. I don't take the JPA's back to the board, their respective representatives take it back to their boards for approval. All I'm doing is giving the background and answering any questions related to the JPA. Each individual member takes it back to their respective boards for approval. I would like to mention some of the concerns that the Commissioner has. The JPA potentially could be amended again. I do, however, have to say that I think that this JPA does meet, I mean, the, what people would like to see happen with this money. And again, it's been increasing potentially, if, I mean, exponentially in market value. I mean, that's a lot of, $6 million in increase in a little over a year that they went into the investment program is pretty good. And I think that the intent of the Mexican CAP entity is to make this funding a little bit more sustainable. We saw requests from legislature to remove $50 million and kind of let it go. Sometimes it doesn't seem as a very sustainable program, so. But anyway, that's just a comment.
If I might just to follow up on that point, because it did raise another concern in my mind. I know that the CAP entity has also discussed using the New Mexico unit fund not for these projects, but to generate income, as you say, to provide for operations and maintenance of a diversion project. It has a very long-term source of operations and maintenance funding, which is another reason I'm hesitant to leave this decision with the CAP entity. As you know, I would not support that. I think it's much better used for different water projects. But there is that concern in my head also, that they would like to invest this and use the interest to fund operations and maintenance on a diversion project that benefits, you know, a handful of folks, if anyone.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, to my knowledge, and I usually take those type of things to the Board, the Board has certainly not expressed any interest in using those, plus the fact that the AWSA requires that the Mexico unit is a sustainable project. In order to be a sustainable project, it would have to provide its own revenues to be sustainable. So, in that matter, what we're doing right now is bringing together our business plan to show exactly how the New Mexico unit would provide the revenues it would need to operate. And so, so that's--
Let's see, that would ease my concern. So, I look forward to the business plan.
So, so we did just get this yesterday. So, and so I haven't had a chance to read over it thoroughly, but in your opinion, does the ISC, through this document, give any of their authority up to the New Mexico CAP entity?
The JPA doesn't give any additional authority to the Mexico CAP entity. The JPA is directly related to the New Mexico unit agreement. It's specific in there, plus the fact that the Interstate Stream Commission, irregardless through the Act, would be the authority that would delegate any potential funding.
And that would remain, that's the way it is now, that's the way it would remain?
That's true.
That was my understanding, but not my understanding from reading the document, so. So, I have to do that. Yeah, so I guess, so what's your timeline of getting this accepted from the various members of the CAP entity?
There is no timeline.
Okay.
So, I would also prefer that we wait until this is--
Okay. And your preference?
The only thing I'd get to vote on is if we see it Thursday. I guess I see it, hurry down.
Okay. I think--
A 2-2 vote would be a negative vote.
Yeah, that's where I was headed. I think a 2-2 vote would be a negative vote, so I don't think we have the votes to put on Thursday's agenda if--
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious about your own interpretation, because you have some doubts that I have. You would be ready to vote on this Thursday?
I'm not sure I would.
Okay. So, it might not even be a 2-2 vote?
I've got to read it, write, yeah.
It'd be a 2-2 vote to put it on the agenda, as we're almost at.
Yeah, just to put it on the agenda and then to read it and study it and get our questions answered. So, I think, I think I need to study it, and speaking for myself, get back to these list of questions, and we'll go from there. Do you have any advice for us? Any questions you want to ask that we should be asking?
Mr. Chairman, I would possibly, you just received it, and I agree that you need to consider, adjust everything about, possibly, well, maybe add a little more language, but again, I just got it.
Okay.
These things are incredibly hard to amend because of 14 rules that have to, 14 that have to approve.
And, I mean, again, what do you--
Right.
They're counted.
Yeah.
You need to go right, probably, right first.
Yep.
But I think that, obviously, the idea is, and why, that I think what the community must remember is--
Can you, thank you. Can you tell us what the next meeting is, the New Mexico CAP entity? I should know this, though. Maybe the eighth January date, eighth January. Any more questions for Mr. Gutierrez? Did you want to say anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas to you.
Okay, thank you. Merry Christmas. I failed to recognize Mr. Javier Salas, Commissioner. I like to see him here with us this morning. Welcome. I think we're ready to review the, I'll turn the time over to County Manager Webb to review the regular meeting agenda.
First item, first discussion, is that your request, Mr. Chairman, out of four recognition of pressure or capacity, if you want to add or change that to recognize all of the elected officials, is that correct?
That's correct. That was my oversight, and actually, what I envisioned, what ended up happening, what I envisioned was taking some time during my comment to make a presentation of Mr. Rollins, Mr. Caston. I didn't envision it appearing on the agenda, but obviously, no one can read my mind.
So is this big and gold, I don't care.
So, I'm not, I'm taking full responsibility. We would like to, I think, we would like to honor all the retired elected officials, and so forget about that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we will amend that to--
Okay, thank you.
So, next item under public input is a public hearing to discuss, discussion regarding ordinance 001801, authorizing the issuance and sale of Grant County New Mexico taxable industrial revenue bonds for the Great Defy Wind Farm, series 2019, in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $400 million, to provide funds to finance acquisition, construction, equipment, and installation of wind energy generation facilities for the purpose of generating electricity, authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture, a lease agreement, a bond purchase agreement, the bonds, and other documents in connection with the issuance of the bonds and the project, making certain determinations and findings relating to the bonds and the projects, ratifying certain actions taken previously, and repealing all actions inconsistent with this ordinance. Following that, you will have option to approve or disapprove this ordinance. Before I turn this over to David Burkholtz, who is on the phone, who is one of our attorneys representing us in this matter, I did want to let you know that since the last meeting, we've had discussions regarding the pill payment. We held a conference call with the school district and their attorneys, our attorneys, and representatives from SCOUT on December 7, I believe. And what we've proposed to you in this ordinance, and also was approved by the school board last night anonymously, was a 50-50 split of the pill payment of $1,750 per megawatt. With a full buildout of 250-megawatt facility, we would be looking at splitting 437,500, which would be to 1,8750 to the county for the next 30 years. School district would receive the same. Also, there was some discussion, and I understand SCOUT's reluctance to guarantee someone build out 250-megawatts, because you really don't know that you're going to be able to do that until they get further along in the project. But what we were able to successfully negotiate was a floor of 160-megawatts. If you recall, whenever SCOUT came to us initially, that was the size of the project. So, they did agree to a floor of 160-megawatts. So, in the event that they scale a project back, language in this ordinance prevents them from going any lower than that 160. So, that would be splitting pills of about 280,000, or not about 280,000, which would be 140,000 to the school district and the county. So, that's all the news that I've had that's a change from the first version of the ordinance you've seen in regards to the report from my last meeting. I believe we have David on the phone, and he'll be able to answer any legal questions you would have surrounding the ordinance and all of the items that, once you approve this ordinance, that executes the documents to make this project come to fruition.
We're going to make sure, thank you for allowing me to be here to call, and, hey, I'm busy by telephone, I have a couple of other things going on in this morning, and my colleague, who is correct, who will be attending your meeting later in the week. I think County Manager gave a good report. I was particularly pleased that we were able, that you were able to negotiate a floor of pilot, because that would give you so certainty moving forward in regards to what amounts of lessons. Frankly, it's a little different than what we've seen in other jurisdictions, but I think it is one of the first place, but there was an improvement to that minimum. Commissioner Brown, I wanted to make sure that you had been given an answer to the question that you posed to me the last time I visited with your folks about the nature of how the charter school gets its dollars from the state, and the simple meaning of answer being that the charter school does not participate in a bill that gets SB 99 separately from the state, and so, money relative to the charter school is not affected by the, you just referenced, one transaction. I know that the feedback has been, those questions, and I was hoping that they got the answers before this meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
I want you off the every standard, they provide appropriate protections for the county in regards to the absence of an necessity to operate the project in any way, the provisions of indemnities to you, the absence of liability in regards to payments of any bonds other than money that is paid as transfers from the, from the development entity, and if I'm owed, will be affiliated with theirs, the bond purchase agreement, just sort of a roadmap to how to deal with the loans, and the, and your documents are relatively straightforward, not because of the issue of the bond. I'm not sure that it's necessary to go through these documents in detail for you, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions, knowing that I think we had a successful negotiation on the amounts and the particular items that are mentioned to the, to the county, and the fact that the documents are very similar to and reflect the documents used for aid for these services, and provide the appropriate protection to the county in regards to liability or operating. So, with that, I'm happy to get questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have--
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Burkholtz, and thanks for your research on my particular question. Are there any other decision points after this one, for this county or the commission? You'll have a say in whether this project moves forward?
No, sir, unless there are changes to the transaction, this ordinance will be the authorization to close the transaction and issue the bond, and that will occur approximately 35 to 40 days after your meeting this week. There is a challenge period, if you will, for the public to raise issues of difficulty during a 30-day period after publication. Rarely is ever have seen a challenge, but practice is, to wait that period out and propose it. But once this ordinance passes, unless details of the transaction change, it is an authorization for deciding the documents and to move forward with closing.
And just to make sure I ask my question clearly, apart from the IRB portion, the financing portion, there are no other-- the financing portion, uh, there are no other steps that you have to get approval for construction or road building?
Well, I, I understand, and I, I, I know all of the county attorney's intentions of meeting today. I understand that we were asked to review briefly some road rail agreements, um, between the county and, uh, the developer regarding, um, the, um, special needs of the developer, if you will, relative to the construction of the project. Uh, Mr. Carr, to review those agreements for I P advised me this morning, uh, one, which I agree that has no effect on the I R B, and two, in his view, it contains appropriate indemnities and protections for, um, for the county. Um, but, um, I think if there were other reasons that came up, the county attorney may be better versed than we are on that question. And while I'm not aware of, um, other actions that would have to come before the commission, I, I think our representation today has been limited to work on the industrial revenue bonds and not on collateral matters, and again, the county attorney may have more information on it.
Do you want to talk about that? No, I haven't.
Right, I think the road use requirements are unrelated to this.
Clearly they are, right? I'm trying to take a bigger picture view right now of the, the project, uh, process that's going to be followed, and, uh, so.
You haven't been involved in creating some process, or if that's what the question is, what process is it?
Well, as, as, as I understand, I guess that, you know, the question might go to, are there zoning number rules, are there other ancillary agreements that the county's been advised of that would need to be passed on by the commission, uh, are they involved in any of the construction activities, the incident, no? Um, and so, you know, while, while I'm not aware of the, the, so the nice people on Del Andrews issues and their entitlement issues relative to their project, um, I, I imagine, and maybe the County Manager or, um, or the Burkholtz staff or working on this for maintenance, construction, zoning, uh, entitlement, um, perspective, might have some comments on that. Uh, but other than the loan agreement, which we're asked to get, and the bonds, um, it's a little beyond, I think, what our responsibilities have been, not that we're not happy to help move forward on those kind of things going forward.
Does that answer your question?
That plus the shaking of heads by four of you, uh, answers my question, so that was very effective. Thank you. All right, so I have another question about G R T, but it's not for Mr. Burkholtz, I don't believe. I guess I'm wondering if we've done any financial analysis on, uh, what we lose in gross receipts tax, uh, by approving this compared to some hypothetical, hang on a second.
I guess it would be that it's probably a game, a gross receipt tax, and the reason I say that is because in regards to services associated with the activity and groups and order, um, that is non-personal property, uh, the developer stands in the shoes of the government and therefore has to pay gross receipt tax on those matters. I, I think the comparison would be, if the county's going to build a county building, it doesn't have to pay gross receipts or compensating tax on the equipment that goes in the building, but it probably pays the gross receipt tax relative to its construction contract, and that gross receipt tax has to be paid here. In regards to the personal property, most, if not all, that will come from out of state, which would mean that a compensating tax was applied, and a compensating tax goes to the state, and the county does not share in that debt. So while what they're doing is, in effect, agreeing that they can avoid the payment of a compensating tax to the state, that is not a tax that the county board otherwise receive in any event, so probably a net plus relative to the type of local gross receipt taxes that they have to pay on construction and service action.
There was a question for you, so thank you.
I, I probably don't want to, I'm not sure.
So I have.
Questions? Yeah, so I guess, I don't know if this is a question, I guess it's a statement and then a question. When you, when you read the opening statement that County Manager Webb read, and as the public reads that, and as the press reads that, uh, and as I first read that, I get a very different impression of, uh, that, what that says from what we're actually doing. Um, I think you understand what I'm saying. Uh, some, I got a text message or an email from a man, I think we all did, and he said, are you out of your collective minds? You're going to soak the taxpayers for four hundred million dollars to build a wind farm, basically.
Yep. I, I, as the County Manager read, effectively what the generic title of the ordinance is, but I think in the public meeting, it would be fair right up front to say, everyone should understand this is not a debt of the county. It is only a mechanism to provide certain compensating gross receipts and property tax evasion, um, the evasion law captured by the payments that passes, the compensating type of evasion is both in regards to payments that would otherwise be made in state, and what is brought to the court, the county is not responsible for this debt. It is not lending four hundred and thirty million dollars. It has not found a lender. It does not have to pay the debt. It's the, the developer does not pay the debt. It is merely a vehicle with protections of, of, to the county of, uh, uh, in regards to what a forty tax, uh, that is to the, um, to the developer. Um, if anyone wanted to get more into the weeds of that, um, you know, everyone should know that, um, San Antonio County has done many billions of dollars of these transactions, but we definitely tell, and it's not some sort of responsibility, uh, each county has done billions of dollars of this type of transactions for uranium enrichment industry, and the county is not responsible, and that this is not some one-off, um, irrational idea of the county having spent all of this kind of money for about four A quarter. And I think, um, I'll, I'll visit with Louise and President to be able to make that, but I think if the county, in, in, in the normal process when you present, I think it might be useful to make those kind of statements, um, uh, right up front so that you sort of avoid, um, uh, and sort of embarrass the public comments or something to that effect.
I agree, and thank you for that commentary you just gave. Thank you. Any further questions?
So, does that mean it's your intention to explain all that before public comments, something?
Uh, no, he said he was going to first, uh, sue his.
I'll, I'll have to leave now, give him a couple of bullet points.
And they all get to go before public comment?
There are no comments that are short of that.
Is that separate?
No, I don't think before public comment, but during.
He could speak during the public hearing, Louise could.
Yeah, hopefully he would speak during the public hearing, which is after public comment.
Number one.
Right.
Had to go as first person, public comment.
Yeah, public hearing.
Yeah, the hearing after the public comment, which.
Just out of experience, it may be wise for you to put your public hearing before public input.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Oh, okay.
Simply because you can limit your public hearing to just that item, and then have public can put on anything else that people won't talk about.
No matter what you think that.
That's generally how it's done.
Would you have a problem with that? Do we need a, do we need a motion, or you think? Okay, all right. Okay, any further questions for, uh, Mr. Burkholtz?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that we take a minute, um, here and figure out what we're doing with what you and I were just having aside kind of a conversation.
Okay.
So we specifically invited Commissioner Elect Salas to come and talk about, participate in that discussion, and we knew that Commissioner Elect Salas had a medical appointment, but I thought we had no other, he has apparently left the building, and you were gonna text him.
I text him, I didn't get a reply, so.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to, um, we should just move on.
I think so, yeah, okay.
We're gonna move here. Would you check, try?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, I repeat it three seconds, but I'll try to get down in person during the G O process, uh, and the attorney, yes, uh, yes, if it would everybody take space and, um, pick hands and say, uh, you know, this is, uh, what we're about to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
So are there any questions? Thanks. Are there any questions for discussing with you guys that are here? Any further questions relative to the public hearing? Did we get all of our questions answered? All right.
Okay, great, thank you.
I wouldn't mind, they had to take on the timeline from now on, assuming we approve this ordinance, uh, for development of the project, just so I have some idea of what time period we're looking at, what the key.
Okay, yeah, great.
What the key sentences left for are.
Thank you.
Well, uh, Commissioners, thank you for the, uh, first time point. Uh, as far as, as far as the timeline goes for construction right now, we're looking at a construction start in late twenty nineteen, and then construction completion in about the end of twenty twenty. Now, there's, there are obviously a lot of details to be filled in with that, uh, with that schedule, and I would say that there is risk to that schedule. It's not, you know, I'm not standing here telling you we have it being placed with break ground in late next year, but that's the, the scale that we're moving towards. Uh, as far as, as far as the schedule with respect to bond issuance and all the documents becoming effective, I think that's still sort of the moving target between us and, you know, our attorneys and, and the County Manager and the county attorneys.
And there are still some programming questions, right? You've got a bird study underway?
Yes, obviously, and, uh, can you speak more to the, to the AVIUM, uh, schedule?
Yeah, year two for, uh, AVIUM, birds and raptors are going. They're gonna do more studies this spring, the supplement. Um, I mean, we, uh, have to meet again with U S Fish and Wildlife Service and Mexico Department of Fish and Game to go over those year two results.
And I anticipate those, uh, those results to be complete. The, the studies are usually June to June, so I would, I would expect August, September timeframe, and we'll have our next consultation.
Both of those agencies have a permit involved, so that they actually have some detail to just communicate with them?
So there is, the U S Fish and Wildlife Service has authority to basically tell us that we need, for example, an Eagle Take permit if that needs to be required. If the agency says you need to get an Eagle Take permit, we then have additional, you know, standards that we need to meet, and we have to produce a, I think in any, in any regard, whether required to get an Eagle Take permit or not, we have to produce a, uh, a, a burn that conservation plan that's agreed to by us and the agency. And, and the New Mexico Department of Fish and Game is, is a part of that process as well.
And I apologize, because once you said those names, I realize you've told me before, but I forgot. So, uh, whether you have to comply with additional ones depends on the results of this, of this ongoing study?
Yeah, I, I think we have to comply with, with their directives one way or the other, whether, whether that directive takes the form of an Eagle Take permit or a burn that conservation plan, that's a matter of consultation between us and the agencies, and, you know, whether the data that we collect over the next year gives them confidence that we do, we can move forward without an Eagle Take permit, or whether they're going to require us to get one, that's still a matter of some uncertainty.
Okay. And another timing question is, uh, under the agreement that's been negotiated, when would the payments in lieu of taxes begin?
Yeah, again, that's, that's, uh, that's something that I think we're trying to figure out with our attorney as well. If you read the current text of the, the lease that's in circulation between us and the county, it would be on the first anniversary of the effective date of the lease. So the question becomes what, what constitutes the effective date of the lease? And there are also some questions around, oh, okay, if we, uh, the, the bond ordinance, one of the, one of the documents gives us up to five years to construct the project. If we're not in construction, do we begin making pilots? I think that's, that's a question that, that we need to hammer out between ourselves and the county.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, uh, Louise did follow up with me, um, later yesterday evening. What he told me is it becomes effective at closing, and the lease is executed and recorded at that time, and then you are required to begin payments within a year, on the one year anniversary of that. But there, there was a conversation that Mike and I had last night, um, I interpret it a little bit differently than he does, um, and so I'm gonna follow up with Louise in person, hopefully we can have that conversation. In my personal experience, it happened as Louise describes it, not as you described it last night. Um, so there's, um, it's just a, um, a clarification, um, I think, that the attorneys are gonna have to clarify for us when that, um, payment begins.
In our end, uh, we consulted with our attorney briefly last night and this morning. What they said is that there are certain, there are certain clauses in the sub-places with landowners and in when construction financing is actually obtained that can control when, when pilots can begin, so. I think it's just like the question of clarification between lawyers and ourselves.
Okay. Any further questions?
I, I have a few, if you don't mind. And I, I guess, I, I'm looking for a little bit more explanation other than the, the status quo of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, as far as how this project moves forward. Um, you, you pushed me very hard to have this done, um, in December, so I, I think that, you know, we need to have a little more specifics of where you are and not this, well, we hope to be starting construction by the end of twenty nineteen, um, because a lot of things hinge upon, you know, if, if you're not anywhere near ready, then why do we just add itself on? And so once, so we need to have a little more, and I'm not asking for this today, but we need a little clearer picture of what your timeframe is other than what you anticipate in the next three hundred and sixty-five days. And I understand you have to have it completely by twenty twenty in order to receive your, your tax credits, correct? Um, so that's just something I'll be looking for, and I'm not putting it on the spot today. Uh, my other question is, is your power for disagreement, have you found, um, customer yet, or where are you on that?
You know, our, our origination team is still scouting the marketplace, um, they're bidding the project into various R F Ps, um, nothing has been picked, um, they're, you know, they're, they're looking for it, I mean, that is a huge threshold to get, to get through.
Right. And you have confirmation that there is, I know, part of the, the, why you like this location was the proximity to P N M's transmission line, and you do in fact know without a doubt if there is room in that transmission line to transport this power out? You have confirmed that?
Yeah, so we, um, are gonna build a substation on private land and tap that line.
So there is room in that line, though?
Yes.
Um, and how are your conversations and your process going with P N M and the state land office?
So, um, the, the project, as it's currently designed, does not anticipate using any P N M land, so we're not, we're not having, we're not, we've terminated our conversations with P N M about using their property. As far as the state land goes, uh, we basically need to initiate, re-initiate the process of getting that land under lease. There's a new state land office, Land, Commissioners, the State Land Office coming in. Uh, the old one had tabled our request in, in favor of higher priority, I was from salsa. Uh, we, as soon as that, as soon as that takes, as soon as that transition takes place, we will re-initiate that.
So y'all thought I wasn't listening?
Yeah, I think you were.
I have two follow-up questions then. So, following about Chairman Ling's question about, um, the transmission line, so the P N M station is actually in Hidalgo County, right? That you're gonna, so you're gonna?
We're building there.
Well, but where it hits the line is in Hidalgo County.
According to the map we saw.
According to the map we saw, the, um, where it joins up is in Hidalgo County.
So, so there is a, a substation called, I believe it's called, Hidalgo County Substation. We're not interconnecting it, that's a substation. We're constructing a new substation on private land located in Grant County.
And the transmission line travels into Hidalgo County, right?
No, sir, there, there is an, there is an earlier iteration of the project that envisioned doing that, and if, you know, there, you may have seen a map that, that's now updated. So the, we are not building a transmission line into, into Hidalgo County, and there's not gonna be any.
Substations and transmission lines.
Well, that just now, that was my second question right out of my head. Oh, no, um, so.
Substations and transmission lines.
Well, that just now, that was my second question right out of my head. Oh, no. So if we pass this ordinance, and what happens if your team does not find a buyer for the generation?
Well, it says that we can't construct the project without securing a buyer for electricity. So at that point, we would need to.
Undo all these documents that this ordinance gives us authority to create.
Well, if we don't construct the project, respectively, there's a project property to deed to the county. There's no property if you lease back to us, so the RFPs, they wouldn't have any, there wouldn't be a basis for that.
Go away.
Yeah, and I actually might need to consult with, you know, my attorney and your attorney to figure out what the specific action items that would take place at that point.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, well, thanks. Thanks for sticking around and answering some questions.
I'd like to, just as at, to accommodate Mr. Salas, I'd like to move Agenda Item G up on the agenda and discuss the process for recommending a replacement for the New Mexico Senate seat vacated by the Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Howie Morales. We have nine candidates for that seat, and I think we need to, I'd like to finish every detail of the process. And remembering that we'll be making this decision on January 3rd when we'll have two new commissioners.
So a couple of things that have come up is, for me, one would be actually, so tentatively or basically what we have planned is to hear from all of the potential candidates on January 3rd at public hearings that start at nine o'clock, correct? And so then, how would we go about, what would be the process if any or all of us did not feel like we wanted to make the decision right then and there? That we wanted some time to process what we hear in the hearing? Would we recess for an hour or a day, or would we schedule a special meeting later in the week? Does anybody else?
I think we could recess, couldn't we? If the majority of the board, the commission wasn't ready, we could recess.
And I'm going to yield this to Abby for, she has a much better grasp on the Open Meetings Act than I do. It's my understanding, reading the section around recess, and thinking that, yes, she could do that, but I want to reiterate that, you know, this decision is going to be made fairly quickly.
And an open session.
Thank you. And that's exactly what, you know, I think if you recess as opposed to scheduling a special meeting, it could leave the impression that you've recessed to consult with your fellow commissioners, which would not be legal.
Or lobby.
Or to be lobby, or whatever. Yeah, I'm not a fan of that idea, or a fan, but I do understand the potential. Not a fan of recessing. Scheduling a second special meeting, when we do that all the time, and it strikes me that, that allows each of us to, just a real investigation. If you recess for an hour, you know, you're not given enough time to do a real investigation. What are you doing? Maybe chatting with each other.
Your point is well taken, and Commissioner, or County Manager Webb's point about timeliness of this is well taken. Whoever gets this appointment is going to have to make some arrangements soon to be up at the legislative session. So, you know, the commissioners in on making that decision will have to keep that in mind. We're going to have, can Mr. Salas speak?
Would you like to participate in the question?
Come on to the microphone if you want.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think our feeling is right now that this is a very, very important decision that we have to make, you know, setting up a senator at this time, you know, and in the changing atmosphere of our government, our state government. We just want to make sure that we make the best choice possible, and we take all the variables into consideration. Now, would it be the most prudent thing to make the decision at that time if we didn't have a clear understanding of all the candidates? So it would be possible that we might want to take a few days to do a little bit of investigation, or, you know, gather all the thoughts and see exactly what we wanted to do. You know, that was the only question. And as speaking for Commissioner-elect Mr. Poncet, I think that we're fairly new to this system. Well, actually, we're very new to this system. So we just want to make sure that we make a prudent decision and we consider all the asks.
Okay. So you do have access to all the nine resumes, right?
Yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Poncet. So we can be reviewing those. I know some of those candidates have requested meetings, I guess there's requested the meetings with you during the time between now and the January 3rd meeting. We can meet with those individually and do our own due diligence and hopefully be more prepared. That does, I'm not saying that the commission, I'm not speaking for the commission, will be ready to make that decision on the 3rd. I hope I will, but if they're not, we need to consider that contingency.
None of the three of us has been that far removed from the feeling that Commissioner -elect Salas expressed of being new to all of this. And I think it might be prudent of us to schedule a meeting that we may not meet, and I would propose doing that as a way of ensuring that the new commissioners are fully comfortable with this decision. And so there's no reason we couldn't schedule a special meeting for that Thursday, the 5th, for example. Well, if it happens to be, I'm done.
I'm just trying.
But look at you. You are starting to correct.
So, we can schedule it Friday.
Friday, the 4th.
Yeah. And maybe you can feel like that day would be adequate?
If we need, I'm not saying we will need it, but.
I would have to also confirm with, ask Mr. Poncet to see his thoughts, but at least the day that it's set to be 5th.
Well, we'll make this decision on Thursday, so maybe you could get back with us before the actual meeting, a regular meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
So we could do, you know, in anticipation, so if we want the extra time in anticipation of that, I would also think that we would be relatively ready to make the decision that the meeting wouldn't have to be particularly long, that we might be able to do it, I guess, three o'clock in the afternoon on Friday, which would be a day and a half.
What says to you?
What do you think?
I have to, the commission for understanding, you know, what we're going through, you know, being newly elected, we really want to serve our constituents, so this is not going to be an easy task. As a matter of fact, it's probably going to be one of the most difficult tasks that we have when we come on.
What can we do between now and the 3rd of January to be more prepared for that meeting? Other than speaking with any of the candidates who've reached out, or anyone that we want to reach out to?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should determine if, what, if any questions we're going to ask, and the amount of time that they have to speak to us for each candidate.
Yeah, so as far as a question goes, my preference would be to let them speak and say what they want to say. So to ask a very general question like, why are you seeking this post, what do you hope to accomplish, very general questions like that, I think would be good. That's just my personal preference. And then we need a time limit, yeah, so.
We'll be turning up with a list of those questions on Thursday, right? That's what this, in my head, that's what this Agenda item was.
Right, okay, yeah.
Well, see, and I think of work as we come up with them now. But it could be just, it could be just as simple as doing exactly what Mr. Billings said, is why have you applied, what do you hope to accomplish, and you have five minutes to tell us that. Could be that easy.
What do you think's an appropriate timeline?
I think if you let them go for more than five, you're going to be.
Nine times five is 45 minutes right there, so.
Plus, plus changing.
Plus changing over.
Yeah.
I think if they can't say, if they're not prepared to be able to say that in five minutes, they're probably not going to can.
What do you think, Mr. Salas, Mr. Brown?
Well, we've all reviewed their letters, and we have a pretty good grasp on everybody, but just their presentation here in front of us, I think is going to make the decision that we, you know, it's going to lead our decisions. So five minutes would be perfectly agreeable.
We'll all agree to that, okay.
I have another thought. It occurred to me that we should discuss whether there's going to be public input at this meeting on January 3rd. Not having ever done this before, prior to our discussion, would there be, would it be appropriate to have public input? To have members of the community express what their thoughts are about any of the candidates?
I feel that would be, and I would be suggesting that we change our Open Meetings Act resolution for next year, so that the default is, there is public input at special meetings.
Rather than having to decide.
The only exception would be emergency meetings, don't have public input as a default. So consistent with that pending proposal, I think we should include it. Now, when people ask me this question, I tell them that, unlike many, many issues where the public input is really vital to me in making a decision, in this case, it's very hard for me to picture incorporating public input into a decision about who's the best candidate to be state senator. That's a judgment that I think we each, with individual, based on our own individual analysis of the candidates, and it's very hard to imagine how somebody said, you know, they've even executed it, would influence my judgment on this issue, as far as most other issues we deal with. However, I do think we should lock up the gig, I think that's our job as commissioners.
Comment?
I'm trying really hard to stay out of this, because I'm not wanting to be a part of it, unless someone really changes.
Well, I know that most of us have been talked to lobby for their own particular candidate they want, but I do think it's important that they, that the public has the opportunity to stand up and voice whatever opinions that they have. You know, whether that would sway our decisions or not, I don't know, but I do think that we should give the public some kind of opportunity. Would there be a way to limit the amount of time? Say, you know, we want, we have X time for X candidate, or something like that, because it could be a long drawn-out process.
So I do have an opinion on that, and it's generic opinion. If you're going to have public input, I would do it prior to the candidate speaking. And once, because you alert to the candidates and to yourselves, to protect them from any heckling or crowd involvement at that time. They deserve that respect. So if you want to have public input, you should probably do it prior to, and I'd limit it to a couple of minutes. I mean, there's, and if anybody gets on some kind of line, you're going to have to, I mean, probably the number one reason my name is not on that list is because of how candidates treat each other in campaigns. Not necessarily here in Grant County so much, but you saw it throughout the state. And it is, it's horrible, the things they say about each other, nearly none of it true from either side, and that's probably one of the number one reasons you won't see my name on a ballot again, is because I won't be treated that way.
So public input is normally five minutes?
Normally, but you can.
So what if we said, what if we said two minutes for public?
That would be fine with me. Again, there's a limited amount you can say about this issue, not like you're going to bring us new facts.
Correct.
So that would be.
But it is an opportunity for the public to.
It's hard to, it's hard to say this, but positive comments will go a lot further than negative comments.
Can we do that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
Because it would be really up to you to direct that at that time.
So we'll plan on having public comment, that being limited to two minutes for Thursday?
I think this is a discussion work session, but that's, I think on Thursday we should make that decision.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Well, the one thing I did want to say that it's fantastic to have such a big and very pool, you know, that means there's people interested in the outcomes that are going to be happening in Grant County, and we've got a very good group of people that have come forth, so it's not going to be an easy decision to make.
I agree.
Agreed, thanks.
Thank you.
Did we miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
If we did, we'll talk about it on Thursday, yeah?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Ready to continue with the regular meeting agenda?
Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, while we are back, two minutes, you will, in your pockets, you will find special meeting minutes on November 7th and your regular meeting on November 13th. But annual reports, item meeting approved, disapproved, December 12, 2018 expenditure report, what does it do, a brief overview of the report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your pocket you have an expenditure report included. And there is included a total of $1,657,703.32 of AP checks, and I will go over those items that are above $10,000. The first one is to a cent aviation in the amount of $21,970.89 for jet fuel purchase. A check to Summit Food Services in the amount of $21,836.67, and this is for the September inmate meals and medical snacks. A check to Ride Express Fleet Services in the amount of $29,896.23, and this is for the October fuel charges. A check to Energy Services U.S. Incorporated in the amount of $40,014.88, and this is for an investment-grade audit. A check to Morningstar in the amount of $14,042.62, and this is for uniforms for the volunteer car departments and the EMS public education supplies. And a check to Vital Core Health Strategies LLC in the amount of $47,831.42, and this is for October inmate health services. A check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $44,480.62, and this is for the October tipping fees. A check to Bohannon Houston Incorporated in the amount of $10,286.79, and this is for designing of the North 30 Road drainage improvements and for the airport terminal reconstruction study. A check to Trevor Hadren for Southwest State Electric in the amount of $14,247.17, and this is for electrical upgrades and pay volunteer car department. A check to Cent Aviation in the amount of $21,200.73, and this is for jet fuel purchase. A check to Caterpillar Financial Services in the amount of $11,535.93, and this is for the World Department Equipment Lease payment for December. A check to Healer Regional Medical Center in the amount of $24,630.67, and this is for the October end of jet claims. A check to Summit Food Services in the amount of $22,688.52, and this is for the October inmate meals and medical snacks. A check to Allen Curtis and, Allen Curtis and Sons in the amount of $12,064.25, and this is for fire equipment and accessories for the Upper Main Gris volunteer car department. A check to Arthur Gallagher and Company in the amount of $10,255. dollars. And this is for the, um, airport liability insurance, um, the second installment premium. And also included into this expenditure report, um, our payroll checks totaling four hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. And this is for pay period twenty-four and twenty-five and a, um, special payroll for overtime back pay. So, the total sum of the entire expenditure report is two million, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, and of course, maybe for a short moment, does the check for the investment real to NG Services mean that we have made some decision about that project and that contract?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes. What we decided to do after many, many months of negotiating back and forth is I made the decision just to purchase the audit. If you remember back in the beginning, if we couldn't cash flow the project to where we were helpful, we would pay them for their audit and that's what we've done. They were unable to adequately prove that the cost savings would pay for the project. So, what the decision we made was to go ahead and pay them for their audits. And we're actually utilizing portions of that audit to, um, determine some of the priority for our facilities projects for the launch. Um, nothing against their audit, they did a great job putting their audit together, they did a great job, um, breaking everything down for us, um, as to what our priorities should be, where our needs are. However, it just was not cash flowing and I did not feel comfortable, I couldn't bring what they were proposing to you. It was not going to pay for itself as it was, as they had it designed. So, we made the decision to thank them for their work, accept our audit and will do that.
Good.
So, then we could take that audit and find another project?
Right. Correct. And, um, you know, the school is doing some work, very similar to what we're doing. Jason is in contact with that particular contractor, is doing work for Silver Schools. There's other options out there, um, other than being tied to, um, this group to do all of our work.
And the folks who did the work at the senior center.
Yes, yes. So, that he has a contact information for, for those folks as well. So, we, we thought there were more efficient pathways of leading this project forward than sticking with NG.
Questions on the, for the questions on the financial report? May I interrupt you on the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry for another oversight, but I wanted to welcome Sheriff-elect Frank Gomez to our meeting today. Recognize him, thanks for being here. And congratulations again on your election. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments on the expenditure report? I am under new business. Approved, disapproved, inventory removed from that county road department to be straight in for auction. Earl transmitted, uh, two thousand five, Fort Ranger, and two thousand seven, F-15 pickup to, uh, be removed from inventory and sent to auction. So, we would recommend your approval through those items for inventory. Questions? Are any of your ID correct? Do you have nothing else you wanna talk about there? Uh, I agree with, um, our level, I have each of mine together because they are basically the same, um, take issue, just different, um, facilities. Close to approve, disapproved agreement A, eighteen thirty-seven, release agreement with Pado Medical Services for use and operation of a member senior center. Item lines approved, disapproved agreement A, eighteen thirty-eight, release agreement with Pado Medical Services for the use and operation of HEA senior center. Abby has worked tirelessly with DMA to make them happy to get these leases complete so we could, um, there capital outlay. Someone turn it over to her and she can explain what the changes are and why we brought this back to you for the third time. Maybe this is.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, you probably recall these leases, we've done a couple times, maybe three times. Um, like Sheline said, we, uh, the state required us to make some revisions to them in order to receive capital outlay for equipment. And, um, so we made those changes and, uh, basically just addressed that there's going to be the study for equipment, where it's gonna go, um, at the agreement ends, it's gonna be ours, things like that. Um, they also kinda raised the standards compared to the last time they reviewed one of these leases and, uh, so we had a slight increase in the rent, um, not much. And, uh, Mr. Otero was okay with it. And, uh, they just were looking closer at how we came up with that. And what was it, was just comparable senior centers and comparable properties. Um, so we worked that out then. And what else do we have here? It's still trade for services at this point, unless the services don't match the cost of the rent, then they would pay as in cash, however, the estimates apply, they're always gonna be able to trade, um, services. So, it was pretty great changes for how long it took, but we finally did get it done and the local government division approved it, approved them. And so, I think we're ready to go if you guys also approve.
Do those have to be done in one?
They will because there's two levels of approval of leases. Um, you can, if you have, if it's less than five years and less than twenty-five thousand for the entire lease, um, then you go to the local government division and the requirements are a little less stretchy. Um, what's, I don't know if they are anymore, or they used to be. Um, the next level, excuse me, my voice is lower, is five thousand and twenty-five, or in more than, excuse me, five years and more than twenty-five thousand. Then you have to go to the state board of finance and you really get a roll at that level. Um, so, we've done them shorter, so that they're lower amounts and, uh, yes, so they're shorter leases.
Questions?
And a approved, disapproved agreement A, eighteen thirty-nine, maintenance agreement with the Mexico Department of Transportation for recreational off-highway vehicle routes. Michael, from the San Francisco, he's been dealing with the Department of Transportation and can explain what this entails.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, one of the requests to NDOT for the recreational off-highway vehicles to be used on the paved roads that NDOT, um, approved with their, uh, resolution. We have to enter into a maintenance agreement with them for the installation and the required maintenance of set signs to direct, uh, those users so that they know which are the designated routes. So, that's what this maintenance agreement is. So, those are not in, you know, even though the resolution from us and the resolution from the commission have been approved, the routes are not legal until this MOU is, or maintenance agreement is signed and then we install those signs. And Abby, I think has looked this over, um, and, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, kind of manager, Wad and myself had some additional questions that we feel like we got answered. And we're gonna have, um, those answers via email and information attached to this agreement so that it's kind of in our files. So, anybody that pulls it out will be able to know.
Any questions or comments? Moving on to resolutions. Item A, approved, disapproved resolution R, eighteen forty-nine, a resolution requiring eligibility and intent of the county grant to submit application to federal highway administration for federal fiscal year 2021, federal and federal land access program, flat funds.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, this is the federal lands access program grant application, uh, for the Walnut Road. It is going to be a joint application with the county and the town of Silver City. We also, um, will be, uh, making sure that they are responsible for their portion and we'll be responsible for our portion, but it will be a joint application. So, uh, right now I'm looking at the final numbers from the town of Silver City, actually have those by the end of this week. And we did get the right-of-way, uh, work completed and, um, I will be working with Earl, very minor, um, issues that we're gonna have to, uh, address. The right-of-way is there, um, there's just gonna be a few that, um, the deeds are gonna have to reflect it accordingly. So, very minor work, then we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, good.
So, um, the four hundred and some thousand dollars match is our share of the match?
That, that would be our portion of the estimated three million dollars. Um, she can start down our end.
Okay.
Cause the, the town of Silver City, um, if they choose to stay with their own requirements of curving, gutter and lighting, their cost, um, is somewhere in the range of seven to eight million dollars. And they would have to come up with their fourteen point five, six percent match.
Okay. And so, um, what I think I hear you saying is that we will, the county's portion will not have to purchase any right-of-way, but we know that the town will have to purchase the right-of-way, is that correct?
We, we have a few issues that are with the deeds and the way that they're describing the property. The right-of-way is, is there, um, it's prescriptive, uh, but for the most part, a lot of the properties already reflect the right-of-way. So, what we have to do is work with those, uh, landowners, probably, hopefully, just have some survey work done, but we'll have to work with those individual landowners. If there's any cost involved in that, like paying the surveyor and stuff, that will not be part of the four hundred thousand, that we have to take care of on our end.
Right. We don't, we're not gonna have any land purchase requirements?
Not that, uh, not that I believe, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks.
Great, thank you.
And, um, approved, disapproved resolution R, eighteen fifty, adopting the asset management plan from county and grant, adopting a reserve policy identifying an allocation of reserves to fund the asset management plan, ratifying actions here to, here to be foretaken, repeating all actions inconsistent with this resolution and authorizing taking other actions in connection with implementation of the asset management plan and reserve policy.
Say that again.
Chairman, Commissioners, as you know, uh, for over a year we've been working on the asset management plan. Um, we have a, uh, grant with the New Mexico Finance Authority that is going to pay, uh, pay us back, uh, seventy-five percent of the cost of the, of the plan. Um, it took a little bit longer than we had anticipated, we had to gather, uh, more data on, um, there were culvert and bar rails and some things that NMA wanted to make sure that we had. Um, we spent several weeks down the field getting that data and then had a crash in our GPS that we were able to overcome, thank goodness, otherwise we had another six weeks from the field we're gonna have to do again. Um, so the asset management plan is complete, you should have a copy of it. It has been reviewed by the New Mexico Finance Authority, they're very happy with it. Um, and they are planning to approve it also this week on their end, which will then allow us to close the grant in, uh, January and get us our, it's like thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, back from them to help cover the cost of this plan.
Did you send us the plan or it's supposed to be in notice?
I think it is.
Because it's not in notice.
Are you talking about the plan, don't you?
No, the asset management plan.
There's a fund reserve balance policy document.
And that was a requirement of the New Mexico Finance Authority.
But the actual asset management plan is not in notice.
I will make sure that you get it today.
How thick is it?
Are we gonna be able to read between now and Thursday morning?
Yes, you will. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty easy reader.
And it's not significantly, significantly different than what you.
Already said, okay.
Yeah. Um, you, you've had many, uh, presentations about the cost per mile, um, versus, you know, paved dirt, drowning, uh, reconstruction versus maintenance, that's all, um, in there.
There.
Yeah, the, the last presentation that Aaron Sussman from Bohannon made to you is pretty much it. What was required was, was some additional data, um, that NMA wanted that we didn't have.
Six weeks, thank you.
Right. And that's, that's where we got hung up and quiet my report to you every month was, we're still working on it, but we got it done.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if you, Manager Webb, could explain the, the connection between the asset management plan and, and the reserves policy, which really just means the additional one to three percent, uh, prior to your operating expenditures put in that reserve. Why is that necessary?
Uh, New Mexico Finance Authority, um, expects us to have a reserve policy. It's something I think that, um, Manager Webb was already coming and Linda, um, they just wanted it in writing, um, as part of the requirements from, uh, the con manual that we've had to stick to in order to get this grant.
It's basically a requirement, we need it back. It's just a requirement. And, and we're seeing it more and more, um, in different, um, grant applications and grant funding where, um, they want to see that you have some sort of written reserve policy. And so, what we did is, um, we, we worked closely with Linda on that. It basically states what we're currently doing, just basically puts it in our writing. We're meeting the DMA requirements. Whenever I was hired, I was given a goal to increase those revenues and have a certain percentage, um, please decide to be able to do certain things. And so, this was sort of just prompted us to get that in front of you, um, to acquire for this. And we see it more and more of that, um, different kind of agencies asked, um, what, you know, for us to provide a reserve policy. So, it, it really doesn't say, well, it doesn't say anything that we're not already doing.
I, I guess I thought the additional one to three percent was new, but it's not.
That, that's a goal that.
Three twelfths are recognized.
And that's a goal that, um, Linda and I try to achieve in the budget, um, every year.
So, the idea is just that we have, in my view, we have reserves to cover things like matches for grants like this and that sort of thing, right?
Okay. Well, my understanding of this reserve isn't that it's, uh, to be customarily used to cover matches, right? It's to be there in case, uh, the downturn, in case of something anticipated.
It can be that, it's just a matter of having that available. What we've started doing is actually, um, if we know that we're applying for grants, we actually budget those cash matches in rather than, than check through on the backside, which is what we were doing previously.
Marking these.
So, um, yeah, it is, basically it just states what we're currently doing, that is reflected in the budget that you guys see every year. And there's no, there's no right and wrong reserve policy, they can't pick it up and say, oh, that's incorrect, it's just a requirement to, to close out this, um, this project.
It does say that we actually have to have a budget amendment approved in order to expend it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And Chairman, Commissioners, uh, I, I would just also like to state that NMA has reviewed, um, this, um, policy and they have approved it. That's also part of the asset management plan. So, that was one of my requirements, I can't even spell that, so I'll keep that with myself.
So, then, um, this has to be closed out then in order for us to do any other kind of application for credit funds from them, correct? And so, um, is there a waiting period or anything like that? So, just as soon as it's closed out then we can begin to pursue other things as we're interested in?
Chairman, Commissioners, that is correct. And another thing that is required, which we are working on right now, is the Colonias application. And they have been, um, getting more and more strict on it. And we're gonna be able to meet that asset management plan in-hand requirement this year. Otherwise, I would have to bring another resolution to you for that application stating that we are in the process of, of building the plan. But since we're looking at, um, the final plan and adopting it, that is gonna meet that requirement. And that hasn't been a surprise, they've been doing that to us for the last two years. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments right now? Um, this item M is a healthcare claim for, approved, approved in November 2018 health plan claim in the amount of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred six dollars and sixty-six cents. This is for three claims to Hila Regional Medical Center and zero ambulance claims. So, we will, we've, um, purchased, um, it's an energy and healthcare solution software that we will be installing the last three days of January, and we will begin processing with our own.
own bills. So it's, the software will, we will plug the bill and it will, it will determine that we're being billed correctly, that we're being billed Medicaid rates, which is what our work says we will be billed. Basically, rather than getting this generic statement that we're getting now, we actually will be getting the detail that I guess submitted to your entrance. I mean, we'll be able to determine that, you know, yes, this detainee was actually in custody at the time and so the goal is that this will hopefully save us a significant amount of money. In addition to that level of having that software, do those calculations and our new healthcare provider is also reviewing all of the charges and statements that we're getting from the hospital to make sure that we're being billed for what they went there for. So we're actually looking at those from two different levels. So there are several other counties in the state that have utilized this and have saved money on their inmate level bills. So we're hoping that we'll see the same result. If you have any more questions?
Yeah, please.
And that, oh, you will have an executive session to discuss pending, the pending opioid regulation. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that concludes.
I have a question, are you anticipating any action as a result of the executive session? Okay.
The executive action document that's included refers to municipal, I don't remember if that is, just because I should draw that.
I wouldn't know, but.
Oh, say that again.
There's a document attached to the executive session, I think, pending regular legislation.
Those are some matters that we'll discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. I didn't see that.
It's not actually legislation.
It's not actually, right, and it's not actually useful.
It's not, it's a sample.
Okay, it's perfect, that's all.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out.
Yes, it is a sample.
Thank you. Chair, let, Chair, let, Carlos, is there anything you'd like to say?
Those are not, this guy home is kind of testing the waters.
Okay, well, it's good to have you.
I don't do it.
Mr. Carrillo, do we have your report, I think? Is there anything you wanted to add to that?
I don't know, sir, I just, I'd just like to take this opportunity, if you'd allow me, to thank Commissioner Caston, Commissioner Ramos for allowing me a privilege to work for and with you and thank you for your leadership and your service.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Moore? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's business as usual down at the road department, just working on road complaints. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Ramos and Commissioner Caston. I know had a bit easy, had to make some unpopular calls, but I think you all did it, but best interest of the county and I really appreciate what you guys have done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. I've got a few things, but I'll make it quick here for, as you know, we're waiting at the end of the year, working, transferring into advanced air, working with them, trying to get fully constituted at the airport. Shooting range, just a couple of things, we did have the NRA inspection and so if you'd like, I can have it mailed to you, complete, you can read it all. I did want to just read the conclusion. So in conclusion, the management of Grant 20 shooting range is definitely working to maintain the safety and health condition of the facility. The shooting range has been a proactive in working to create and maintain the safest possible environment. The management has demonstrated mindfulness, mindfulness in the needs of the, my glasses, limited particles, providing ADA compliant access to each range within the facility. The shooting range demonstrates a willingness, desire to improve the operation of the range to maintain safety and health of the range and is motivated and enthusiastic regarding enhancing what is offered to its clients. So again, I will send you the full reports, you can keep it to you all, but just in conclusion, they were very impressed with Kirk's job out there. Again, Jason working really hard with Kirk to make sure that it's running as best as it's ever ran before, getting a lot of people out there shooting and Kirk's going to move his job, so I definitely have to give him the coolness of the job that he's doing. The other thing we did change, I thought I brought this up before, but Jason reminded me, we did change vendors when it comes to how they trash away. We're able to save additional $2,100 a year on finding a new service, but with that we also included the shooting range. So we're able to get, with that saving, we're still adding another facility which was a shooting range, so I'm thinking for that. He also mentioned that we're, the road that the courthouse will begin in early March. I forget where, anyway, he said that that's in the process and so that construction will begin in early March. I just want to remind people that, you know, with the wood stoves and the tonne stoves and the ashes outside, we had a couple of small ones in the state, thought they weren't nothing major, small grass fires and a couple of fires on the front yard, these people just pulling them out and not making sure that they're put out somewhere. Just remind people that that's not, that's not a good thing to do, so we should clear out. Other than that, unless you have any, well, we are going to have 25 backup helicopters who order fuel from us on January 4th, so that's going to be a big scale for us. So we're going to work together with the team, the few people we have out there themselves to make sure that we facilitate that and logistically get those people down and backup. So unless you have any questions, I did want to say also, Commissioner Caston and Commissioner Ramos have been friends with you for many, many years, but I think in your capacity as a commissioner, I think again, I think your biggest, the ability that you have is to make sure that the county's financially sound and public safety was a big issue along with the roads. And so I want to thank you guys, wish you a very, very Christmas and I'll make you the best of luck.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you and family too.
Thank you.
Any questions for us, man?
I didn't have any questions. So how's it going with the transition with the mayor and the outgoing part with OP?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, as far as I can see, I mean, the transition is going, it's ongoing on communications with them. We are working on all the leases and all that with them, the fuel prices, everything that goes along with it, but they're starting to send stuff to us now, restoring it in our facilities so that as of January, you know, 5th, they come on, they're ready to go. But they'll be coming in, also have representation come in in the next coming weeks as we get past the Christmas holiday and into early 2019, be working with us. But I don't see any problems as it is now, the team has showed us their schedule as they end the year, the first week of 2019. But, you know, I haven't had any hits besides a lot of delays right now, but those are weather conditions.
Wind delays?
Right, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, that's the biggest concern, that's been a concern even prior to the bringing on the advanced air, so. But we're working with them, they're working with us to make sure that the condition is smooth as we can possibly do. And I do want to thank Rebecca because she has done an outstanding job of making sure that we're all in communication with advanced air and OP and of course the governor.
Chair, Brad?
Yeah, there was a report in the paper of further on vandalized vehicles at the airport sort of telling that we should be doing.
Yeah.
Through security.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown, that's exactly what we're working on right now, this has happened last week. So we had some minor vandalism prior to that. This was a big one, so it brought a lot of concerns and we're working with the county manager to make sure that we locate security systems out there. It is in the, in the plan moving forward as we, you know, we do the work at the airport, that's part of it in the plans is to upgrade the lighting and security system, but I think we need to fix now and so we're working that as I speak to you now, making sure that we can get something in place before we begin to that construction with the airport.
Great, really glad to hear that.
Thank you.
So maybe as part of that, security upgrade included video so that we could potentially identify perfectly?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, it's exactly what we're looking, working on video scan, I don't want to get all the way into it.
All right.
But I think it's important that we do make sure that the patrons that fly at Baster moving forward, that their, that security for their vehicles, that they know that they're going to be secure while they're, they're not in great condition.
Well, the thought occurred to me, when I saw the article in the paper, the thought occurred to me that never once, when I parked my car out there to fly somewhere, have I thought about vandalism. And it was kind of an eye-opener, you know?
Right, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Edwards, you've been talking with law enforcement as well, this is the time of year where people start to, you know, look for ways to, you know, sell stuff or get stuff, of course, you know, stealing gas and they're allowed to put in their own cars and they can use it for whatever reason they're using it for. So, but this is the time of year, we haven't had this in the previous years, but it's a time of year where you, you know, you find this kind of vandalism and this kind of theft. But we do have to make sure that we secure the airport and so I'm working on it as we speak.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
And he's a chairman, Commissioner. Tazza, closing out the CVVG, we did have an audit and everything was great on it, just had to close that item. The only thing that I've got left is the volunteering, which is that for January 7th, it was only for last night actually, so we'll get that done. One of the best outcomes that I think was amazing was HMS was required to produce no less than 19 jobs, create new jobs with it and 51% had to be at least provided to LMI people and they actually created 36.8 jobs and I think it was, would I say 57% were able to LMI.
That's a little modern, yeah.
That's a little modern, yeah. So I think that's just phenomenal that that happened. So who's been on that?
Does that include the 20 that they referred to today as needing to be agreed?
I believe it does, but yeah, so they were able to provide documentation to the EMA and the DRS that they created, the 36.20. They're not billed, right, but they've been creating.
What, okay.
Yes. We did the pre-construction meeting yesterday for the addition of, we did prior to that. We applied for the water trust board, we were not recommended for the watering project to go forward for five years. So I will try to index here, I'll be able to find that on that. And I just want to talk about the shooting range also. We've been working with the water service for 11 months now to review our permit. This was one of the requirements was getting the NRA, so we are getting a 30-year permit as our next one, they typically have been 10-year permits, but part of the funding that Commissioner Caston has asked us to work on for the minimum office and act money to be able to some of the greatest out of shooting range when you get 30-year permit. We will get that 30-year permit. They assumed that Adam could sign it and we just found that I was all right in it. No regional water office needed the requirement that they sign it. We had all paperwork ready to go and then the regional office told them, oh, the paperwork we did on seven years old, so we've got to redo it. But we are right there. I can imagine that we started this process in November because we had a 11 months to get it handled, but we are there, so I'll point that out. I'm sorry we didn't get it done before you left, Commissioner Caston, but I know that we are still working on it.
I got you.
You can still shoot firearms. And I would just like to thank both Commissioner Ramos and Commissioner Caston for their reserve.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes.
How many people use the shooting range a day or a month?
I don't have those numbers, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I don't have those numbers, but I can get them and have a leave out to you. It just depends on the time of year. Obviously it's hunting season, probably late August into end of December and end of January, you'll get a lot of shooters on the weekends, but it just depends on the time of year, but right now we're getting a lot of shooting. And so there's a lot of interest in outcome from people that never use the shooting ranges who've been calling, so again, I want to thank the manager's office as well for making sure all of that information about the shooting ranges, all the pages and all the information there. We do have a phone line out there, they'll ask me, they'll try to put it straight down, but so there is communication passing on the site, so people can call and get encouraged to do that and this job, so it's easy to say that I'm in answer to that.
That's great, well, I think it's clearly an amenity that people really appreciate.
And if, if I may, Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, the water service is really supportive of that shooting range. They have another one which is, they don't like what they call a lot of cap shooting ranges, just probably not to follow the board, so they definitely want to continue this relationship and want to be more.
Thanks. Did I miss anyone? Commissioners? I don't hear any.
I'll reserve my comments for Thursday.
Okay, very good. Is there, there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second chair, all in favor?
Thursday, no.
All in favor?